And welcome to the special called meeting of the Stafford County School Board beginning at 6:30. Calling us to order, as of right now, no one is requesting to participate electronically. We do believe that Ms. Hollerback will be joining us after she gets through with traffic. Ms. Hall, can you call our names, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy? Ms. Hollerback is absent. Ms. Randall?
Here.
Ms. Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Is there an approval of the agenda?
Let's look at first.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any deletions, insertions? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Randall, can you read us into closed session?
Yes. I move that the school board convene a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and or consider candidates for employment.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session. We'll retreat to the... Back from closed session. Ms. Randall, can you read us out of closed session, please?
Yes. Pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, I move that the closed meeting of the School Board of Stafford County on November 9th, 2021, be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the School Board of Stafford County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Ms. Hall, can you poll the board, please?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Agree.
Ms. Hazard?
Agree.
Ms. Healy?
Agreed.
Ms. Hollerback?
Agreed.
Ms. Randall?
Agree.
Dr. Warner?
Agree.
And Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
All right. Is there a motion coming?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board allow the board chair to negotiate and execute a contract with a selected superintendent candidate.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please...
Madam Chair, Ms. Randall, would you mind changing the allow to authorize?
Yes. I authorize... I move that the school board authorize the board chair to negotiate and execute a contract with a selected superintendent candidate.
Second. As revised for the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We will also be announcing that we will be calling a special called meeting tomorrow evening, Wednesday, November 10th, at 7:30 with the purpose of announcing our new superintendent. All right. We are going to close our closed session and we will move on to our new meeting. So this part of the meeting is adjourned. All right. Five minutes, sorry. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the November 9th Stafford County School Board meeting. All members are in attendance. No one needs to participate electronically. Before we go into roll call, I would just like to note that when you are in this building, that masks are required as are posted. We expect public decorum by all visitors. Loud or disruptive behavior or failure to comply with this requirement to wear a mask or being disruptive may result in you being asked to leave the meeting. Next is our roll call. Ms. Hall.
Ms. Hall? Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Ms. Hollerback?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Dr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. Young?
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. I would ask everyone to rise as we have our color guard presentation by North Stafford's High School's Air Force JROTC.
I pledge... I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I would like to thank our tonight's color guard members, our team captain Cadet Lex Lofijo, Cadet Rivera, Cadet Ragbir, Cadet Takalara, I'm so sorry, and Cadet Dunlap. And our leaders are Colonel Catherine Bacon and Master Sergeant Tony Mendoza. Want to thank our students for coming this evening and presenting the colors. Next, we have a motion... Do we have a motion to approve the agenda with amendment?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to change the agenda to move consent to after awards and recognition. Motion to approve the agenda with that one change.
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other additions or suggestions? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. We will be starting with our awards and recognitions. We're going to be recognizing our Stafford High School Theater Program this evening. So let's see, who is coming forward? I believe it's going to be Ms. Osborne. Thank you.
Only briefly. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Jones. It's my pleasure to recognize Principal Alan Hicks, who will share with you a significant award earned by the Theater Department at Stafford High School.
And Mr. Hicks, if you will remember, just to turn that to you so we can make sure everybody in the front, the back, and at home can hear you, please.
Up or down? Can I lower this?
You can, when you're speaking.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I am Alan Hicks. I'm the principal of Stafford High School. On October 30th, Stafford High School Theater won the Virginia Theater Conference State Championship in the production of The Secret in the Wings. Aaron Howgan was named Best Actor with All-Star Casting Awards, going to Sarah Bella and Craig Hughes. The troupe also won Technical Merit Award for their set in the Gold Medal in Tech Theater Olympics. The cast includes Sarah Bella, Haley Aid, Dawson Carneal, Keenan Chin, Anna Marie Yor, Tyler Gilkerson, Aaron Howgan, Jackson Henry, Craig Hughes, and Gwendolyn Ware. The technical director is Max Redman and the stage manager is Darby Redman. The stage crew includes Mercedes Benz Bushlane, Sienna Green, Emily Herod, Levi Jarvis, Savannah Jordan, Sadiq Kareem, and Caitlin Newman, and also Brandon Sultan. Stafford now has the honor of representing Virginia at the Southeastern Theater Conference in Memphis, Tennessee, in March. The purpose in attending this conference is threefold. First, is the opportunity for students to represent the state of Virginia in the nation's most prestigious high school theater festival, which includes the top plays from each of the 10 southeastern states. In 2012, Stafford High School brought home the title of Southeastern Theater Conference Champion to Virginia for the first time in 20 years. And in 2014, a Stafford High Actor was awarded one of the top four acting awards at the SETC. Another main component of this conference is college auditions. Colleges from all over the country attend to screen students for admission and scholarships. In the past, we've had students come away from this conference with an offer from admission and scholarship to some of the most competitive theater programs in the country. The greatest opportunity is 100-plus workshops presented by experts from all over the world for our students. At SETC, you find a multitude of acting workshops in specific techniques, a variety of movement and vocal techniques, also with very specific aspects of technical theater such as special effects, makeup, programming, moving lights, paint techniques, puppetry, and also more to be explored. The aspect of the conference is transformational for the students, enriching them intellectually and artistically while broadening their horizons for what it means to be a maker of theater and an artist and also a citizen. Our students will be fundraising in the upcoming months for this fantastic event. I'd like to also take time to thank our directors and instructors, Mr. D'Addario and also Ms. Holmes, have done an excellent job with these students. And also, I'd like to thank these students, through the last few years, have done an exceptional job, not only in this situation, but also in many others, especially in the virtual situation, making productions for our community to watch and see throughout our year. So they do an excellent job. At this time, I'd like for those students to stand along with their instructors so we can recognize them.
Please take a bow. Come on up. We're going to have you do that, turn your back to this audience and look that way so that you can get the great photo. Congratulations. It's always a delight to watch your all's productions. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hicks. And thank you all for coming this evening.
Thank you guys so much. Congratulations.
And have fun in Memphis and bring home more of that hardware. All right. Our next item is regarding our consent... Our two consent items. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'm going to turn to Dr. Jones if you may want to do an introduction.
If you'll allow me, I think Mr. Baldwin is somewhere in the audience. He's going to announce as he comes forward.
I see him.
He's going to announce a new member of his team.
Excellent.
Mr. Baldwin, the floor is yours, sir.
Roll on down.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Dr. Jones. Just a moment as he was just acquiring his family to bring him in. As young ones that are usually in bed now.
Come on down.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and get started if that's okay.
Yes.
Coming down. So I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Walter Hunt. He's joined our Transportation Services as our new supervisor. Mr. Hunt comes to Stafford County Public Schools from the Prince William County Fire and Rescue Department, where he has served for 26 years and retired as a captain. While there, Mr. Hunt oversaw the department's driver, operator, instructor program and served on several state committees related to emergency driving operations. Mr. Hunt specializes in leadership management, having graduated and worked for the Northern Virginia Leadership Development Institute and developed and overseen Fire and Rescue Advanced Training Division and Leadership Advancement Program. Mr. Hunt is a strong believer in public service, having previously served in the military as a crash rescue operator and humanitarian missions in Kosovo and elsewhere. He's been the recipient of the Prince William County Executive Award, Career Firefighter of the Year, and Dale City Civic Association, and received citations for bravery, life-saving, and two medals of valor. He and his wife Allison reside in the Hartwood District with their three daughters, Henley, Aubrey, and Ronan, who are current and future Margaret Brent Bobcats. I'll present to you Mr. Hunt. Okay.
Welcome aboard, everybody. We're excited you're here. And thanks for everybody coming to support Dad tonight. It's definitely a family affair here. And so thank you all for coming and taking the time this evening and welcome aboard, sir.
All the hardware we just heard of, you will be needing all of that.
Thank you.
Bravery, okay? Life-saving skills.
It's just a shame a new employee has to go through fire to dead hair. There's a lot of comedic relief on this board.
So next...
I've never was short on that.
Next, we're going to have our school board proclamations. I will turn this over to Dr. Chase at this time.
So this is a proclamation to designate November 8th through 12th, 2021, as School Psychology Week. Whereas all children and youth can learn with the proper supports and deserve an education that meets their needs, and whereas sound psychological principles are integral to instruction and learning, social and emotional development, prevention and early intervention, and supporting culturally diverse student populations, and whereas children's mental health and resilience are directly linked to their learning and development and must be prioritized in order to ready children to receive instruction, and whereas schools provide an optimal context in which to promote resilience and strong mental health in children and youth because of the nature of the learning environment and the presence of trained, caring professionals, and whereas school psychologists are specially trained to deliver a continuum of mental health services and academic support that promote children's resilience, competence, and well-being within the school setting, and whereas school psychologists facilitate collaboration and help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, promote protective factors, create self, safe, healthy, effective, and supportive learning environments, access needed community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies, and whereas school psychologists acknowledge the adverse impact that may result from social injustices and are poised to promote equity, healing, support, and positive steps for all, and whereas citizens of Stafford County should recognize the vital role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of our county's children. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of Stafford County hereby designates the week of November 8th through 12th, 2021, as School Psychology Week throughout the school division, adopted by the School Board of Stafford County on this ninth day of November, 2021.
And a real shout out to all of our psychologists and all those that are supporting the mental health needs of our students. Thank you. Thank you so much for all that you do. All right. Mr. Fulmer will be coming forward with our presentation on the first quarter financial report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Jones. As always, I will try to keep this brief and direct. So I did present to the Fab last week. As all of you have served multiple years now, you realize that usually the first quarter we're pretty early in the year, so there's still a lot of year left. And so not a whole lot to report. So I wanted to touch on some high-level things though. First, on state revenues, just a reminder that we have a Hold Harmless Clause from the state, which means if we dropped an enrollment from what we were budgeted, we're not going to lose funds. And we could add some kids, we're not going to gain additional funds. However, the state's been doing really well, so I'm optimistic that maybe during the governor's proposed budget and then through the General Assembly that we could see adjustments in our budget that will lead to increased revenues. We will not know that until, at least what the governor proposes, until mid-December. And then the GA would be in February, March timeframe. On our federal revenues, they're pretty level this year. I did want to point out that we have our Impact Aid forms that are out there now. Use this time for any parents that are currently watching. We need you to complete our digital Impact Aid survey that was sent out a few weeks ago. Everybody remembers, we usually send out the green forms and it was a paper version. Last year, we didn't have to submit the Impact Aid survey at all. The federal government waived that requirement last year. We do have to do the survey this year, but I've got some marvelous staff that work with technology that got a digital form ready for us this year that was approved by the federal government, one of the few localities that has gone through that process to get that approved. I will say right now, our survey results are low, so we need to really get those up. And so we're going to start that campaign to really push getting those back. On the local revenue side, these are... This isn't new news to you, but I wanted to point out that the county approved our appropriation request for carryover funds, not only for the driver scale adjustment, but also for the bus purchases. The bus purchase is actually in the second quarter, but I just wanted to point it out while I had the chance. So you will not see that amended on our adjusted budget lines in the attached report. Also, what we did not have budgeted, we had additional funds come in for a rebate, $119,000. So always good news. We had our train who did our energy performance contract develop the program, a tax rebate, and split part of the proceeds and gave them back to Stafford County. And they might actually be in front of you in the future to present us with a check for that.
We like checks.
Yes. On the expenditure side, as I mentioned, it is early in the year, but we're trending as expected in most categories. And as always, areas that we watch are salary and benefits, primarily the lapse. So if you recall, we always budget, or the last few years have been budgeting $3 million in salary lapse, which means we build all of our salaries based on the individuals that we have, we fill our vacancies, and then we subtract that total compensation and benefits line, or in the budget, we reduce it by $3 million because we know we're going to have turnover, and we also know we're going to have vacancies during the year. It's always hard to project those vacancies. We want to be optimistic. We don't want to over-budget and reduce our budget too much by the salary lapse because if we fill all of our vacancies, which is always the intent, then we'll be in a boat where we're looking for funds to cover instead of having additional savings. As I mentioned to the Fab, with our current vacancies, we could see salary and benefit laps up to $6 million. So that's exceeding our budget by 3 million, which means it's additional savings. Now, what we have to watch closely is whether those savings are offset with our substitute hourly pay. I will say right now, as we monitor our substitute pay for the first quarter, we're not seeing a huge increase there. So I actually believe that we will be able to recognize a lot of those salary savings. I already mentioned, we also rolled in the million and a half. So on the revenue side, we have an increase in revenue, 1.5. That's because of the additional expenditure we have budgeted for 1.5 for the driver scale I attached the quarterly financial report for the operating fund specifically. And I just wanted to point out a few things. Because we haven't closed the fiscal year for FY '21, it looks a little different than prior years when you would have seen it. You'll see on our purchase order line, the encumbrance line, you'll see negative encumbrances. And what that represents is if we have a purchase order from the prior year that rolled into this year, we pay it with our FY '22 money, but it actually credits back to the prior year. So you have an increase in expenditure in '22, and then it reduces with an encumbrance. Once we close the fiscal year in the next month to six weeks, you will... The system actually corrects itself and moves it into an adjusted budget line and out of the encumbrance line. And then, lastly, on the next few slides now, I've added a federal funds update just to rehash where we're at with the federal funding and to point out, because we have this later on the agenda, student tuition, to show you where we have the funding for that available. So this is not a new slide, actually. I presented a few months ago, or actually several months ago, when we did last did this update. So we also received money directly from the county, which the county received from the federal government. So it was passed through from the county to us. All of that money was spent the last time I presented it to you. I'm just pointing out again that we received that money and all of it was spent. On the funding that was received directly to the school division, I have two slides on that. It was four different big pots of money. I'm going to zoom in a little bit, hopefully. The first we got was S.R. 1 through the CARES Act. That was around $1.5 million. That's where... So that was the first pot of money we received back in FY '20, and it was for FY '20 and going into FY '21. We have... We show $35,000 remaining there, but that is because I've moved $600,000 into this virtual student tuition line. That was originally in our Learning Loss Remediation Summer School Learning Line, which was from that calendar year 2021 summers. Because we had operating funds available, I used that first so that we could carry this federal funds over and use in subsequent years. So we have $600,000 that is allocated from that first S.R. Funds, S.R. 1 grant that can be used for our virtual student tuition. Our second pot of money was our coronavirus relief funds. That was $5.2 million. You can see that that was for technology, air purifiers, and buses. All of those funds have been expended. And real quick, back on the S.R. 1, we have $400,000 that's expended and allocated for nurses. That was for last year and for the rest of this year. The third big pot of money was the S.R. 2 funds, CRSA. It was a little over $6 million. So that and the S.R. 3, which is the ARPA on the right, those are for multiple years. So a lot of that has not been expended, but I wanted to show you that it has been allocated. And this has not changed since the last I reported to you. The 6.3 was split over some of the positions that we really... Most of this was items that we pulled out of our operating budget and identified that we could fund it with federal dollars and it helped balance our FY '22 budget. Knowing that we would then have to cover it in FY '23, we went ahead and allocated funds enough for FY '22 and FY '23, we still had $500,000 left in that to cover targeted learning loss as well. And the last big pot, the biggest pot, was $14 million. That was S.R. 3. If you recall, presented to the board a few months back, the beginning of the school year, letting me know that we were allocating the money for paraprofessionals and some instructional coaches. We also had allocated money in the budget for social workers and a network technician. There was 20% of this S.R. 3 award had to be used for learning loss specifically. Now honestly, as we submitted our application for that, they were... The state and federal government were very clear with us that a lot of what we have allocated here would qualify for the learning loss, specifically our paraprofessionals, which was over $7 million. That's well over the 20% requirement. We still have $1.8 million set aside to help with learning loss remediation and summer learning. And this is really for the next, this fiscal year and a couple of years after that. As I mentioned, we had set aside some money for balancing the budget for additional costs that we incurred related to the pandemic. We set aside $500,000 for student fee support. That is still allocated. We'll start using that up this year. And we had set aside money for the virtual student tuition. You see, we've allocated $700,000 there. And then lastly, the community engagement bus of $100,000. I will say, we're still working on that. We're excited to do it, but it does require us to either identify one of our own buses or to get another bus. And the idea was that we would identify one of our own buses, but right now, the priority is to use those buses to get kids to and from school. So when we get our next batch of buses in January, that's going to be something we'll explore if we have a... explore if we have a, have a bus that we can convert, convert for that purchase. Just pointing out for both of these that we probably expect some changes because they are over two, three years. So we'll report back to you as we make changes to that. So any questions on the quarterly report or the federal funding?
Any questions? Go ahead, Dr. Chase.
Yeah, Mr. Fulmer, so a large amount of this expenditure is for additional elementary school and middle school paraprofessionals. Have we been able to fill all those positions?
So, great question. I actually looked that up because I, one, we like to track it to know whether we're going to spend that money and if it's going to, how far it's going to get us. So, but knowing that it was going to be asked tonight, I looked that up specifically. So we have filled over seventy-five of them, so about seventy-six and a half. We also have two outstanding offers, so that number will, is keep going up. And we have about thirty-four vacant right now. Which, sorry, I just want to say is actually kudos to HR and our schools because that's a quick turnaround, and that's a lot of paraprofessional positions to fill, and they've done a phenomenal job filling this.
And, you know, we've been hearing a lot about how, how hard everybody's been working in our schools, the teachers and the administrators. And I know, I'm thrilled that HR has been able to fill as many of those positions, would love to fill more. And then also, if they aren't filled, I know you're keeping track of it to make sure that then perhaps those funds can be used for something else. But I think all of us would agree, we really want them to be used for direct instruction in the classroom, paraprofessionals, that kind of thing.
And when I developed the seven point two million dollars for the paraprofessionals over multiple years, we anticipated some vacancies there and that it would take us at least a half a year to get most of those filled this year. So we were able to already allocate a lot of that to increase the number of paraprofessionals we could hire.
In the same vein, what about the high school coaches? Do we still have any of those as vacancies?
Yeah, so one has definitely been hired and two are in process. So those, I think, are a little bit trickier because we don't want to create vacancies within our schools. So those have been a little bit more challenging to fill, but we have made progress there, yes.
Okay. And have we hired our two online, or yeah, two online coordinators?
Yes, ma'am.
And what specifically are they involved with? Are they involved with our virtual kids, developing our virtual, our own virtual school? Or what is their?
I would say all of the above. I know for a fact. There might be more to it, and that would definitely be, I couldn't speak directly to that, but I know they're definitely involved with our, our virtual students and overseeing that and also developing more virtual curriculum.
Thank you. Ms. Healy?
Mr. Fulmer, is there anything we're doing for the high school classroom teachers with these funds? I think it's great, we have them for the elementary and middle, but I know a lot of the high school teachers are equally overwhelmed.
Yeah, so that was the intent of the instructional coaches, because it's a little bit harder to use paraprofessionals at the secondary level. So the instructional coaches were for keyed for, were identified for helping at the secondary level in high school specifically, for tailoring and instruction and curriculum for whether it's virtual or your in-student, or in-person students.
And what is the number of those instructional coaches?
It's one per high school.
Okay, so one per high school. Is there anything else we can do? I mean, there's, how many teachers in a high school? Many, many teachers?
Yes, many. We can continue to explore that, and I know that's a topic probably later on the agenda as well.
Okay, yeah. If there's funding that's available, I would like to see if we could do something additional for the high school teachers, and perhaps they would be in the best position to give us some suggestions to high school principals.
And I'm sure we'll discuss it later, but I'll point it out now too, that Mr. Burnett in HR is, is working on enhancing the substitut, substitute pool and has some ideas there that we believe will, will help spark that. We talked about it at the Fab, and I'm, I'm sure it'll come up later tonight as well.
Chair, just wanted to say that the advertisement of their dire situation with substitutes, the word is getting out, because one of our former school board members, who is retired from his government position and is now an adjunct teacher in a university, is put in to be on our list. And I got a reference today, which I filled out. So this is truly a labor of love because he wants to help Stafford County Public Schools. So they're doing a good job of getting that word out, and I would continue to get that word out, that we are looking for subs. They don't have to commit for, you know, a long-term or, you know, whatever specific days, but the more we have on that sub-list, the more likely it is that, you know, we'll have an adequate pool so that our teachers can take days off when they need to.
Yes, ma'am.
Fill out that reference form, Ms. Young.
Did you take my notes? Ms. Healy, did you, did you grab my notes?
I did what?
Did you grab my notes about substitutes?
No, but you know, we're always on that same track.
So yeah, substitutes and making sure that we have enough. I know there's a pool, there's a lack. I sent you someone, hopefully. Patrick did get hold of the person, spoke Spanish and, and English, and she was, she was, she wanted to be a teacher. And I told her, definitely get hold of you all. So as in my travels, I always try to find bus drivers and, and teachers for us. But I also spoke to a high school math teacher for forty minutes that had so many different jobs, and I, I just, it, it hurt my heart. So we do need to do something for our high schoolers, the teachers, math teachers especially. I know Dr. Chase has talked about that forever, but not until I actually spoke to her one-on-one colonial forge, that we just need to look into that specifically. Like, we need to, we just need to unpack what they're doing and figure out a way. And I don't think it's about substituting right now, it's really about making sure that the work and the worth is being paid for.
Dr. Jones, did you have a comment?
I'll just add a comment. You know, we have a Teachers for Tomorrow program, so those are, are a way of growing our own students. So we've been working, Mary Washington, University of Mary Washington is going to hold a Teachers for Tomorrow Summer Institute this summer with our students. So we are looking at growing our own as well.
Don't go. You knew you wouldn't get away without. So I'm on a totally different topic, and I just want to make sure I understood what you said. You know, for two years, I've been arguing for the hold harmless. Well, now, the hold harmless may hurt Stafford County would, because our, of our growth. Is that your understanding, or did I misunderstand it? I just want to make sure. Is the hold harmless, we have?
Yeah. So the hold harmless was to, for school divisions that dropped enrollment due to COVID, which was, I think, every school division, from what the state originally projected. So for FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two, so the year we're in now and then prior year. Originally, when the state built their budget for Stafford County schools, it was about thirty thousand seven hundred students, which was right on pace where we would have been. But we kind of got held in place for a year because of, we didn't grow. Last year, we dropped some students. Well, this year, we gained most of them back and still grew. So we're about, you know, almost thirty thousand one hundred now. At September thirtieth, we were right over thirty thousand. So it, right now, it's helping us in FY twenty-two. The hold harmless goes away after this year, from what we're hearing, and, but we assume that they're going to take those funds and roll them right into basic aid. So we anticipate when our funding for FY twenty-three and the next biennium comes out, that we'll still see an increase.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that comment, because I'm thinking we are a growth community.
Yes.
At some point, we're going to need to be being paid for our students, and I know that they do. Any thought that they will be looking at that March thirty? Is it the March thirty number? Or we're held, it's held harmless all of this calendar year?
Yeah, so.
Or this school year, excuse me.
Yeah, and, and actually, if we were to exceed the thirty thousand seven hundred, they would fund us for that if we exceeded that. But right now, we're not, we're not, probably not going to add six hundred kids in the next, you know, five, six months. So, so we're going to benefit from it for this year, and then we'll see what happens next year.
Okay. I don't think we're going to be losing a lot of students, just, just saying.
No, I don't.
I just wanted to make sure I understood the hold harmless, and, and I was hoping that was a good thing. All right. Any further questions about our financial first quarter report? All right. Hearing none, we're going to move on to our citizen, oh, sorry, yes.
Madam Chairman, I was given a request that we vote on the action items. I don't think there's, is there nothing controversial on there?
We have, they're on information to be moved to action, so we don't have anything under action right now.
We have three.
Yeah, there's three action.
But we have some information to go to.
If, if it is the pleasure of the board, we can go ahead upon a motion to move the action, the three action items as listed. I do not want to go further than that because those were the ones that were advertised.
That's all I would ask, but.
I don't think they should take more. If, if there's any extended discussion, we can move them back, but that, that way we could take care of them and then staff could leave as well.
Okay. Is that a motion? Is that, is that a motion to move the three action items, twelve point oh one, two, and three, to, to prior to citizen comments? Is that the motion? Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All right, we will go ahead and move those. So the first one is regarding Wildwater State Park. Is there a motion to, to move that forward?
Motion to approve the resolution for Wildwater State Park. I think this would be a great benefit to our school system.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion or comment? I think we had a great presentation by Mr. Horning. I know it is a passion of his, and we, as the school division, are excited to partner with him and.
And the General Assembly.
And the General Assembly, so. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our high school program of studies.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments, questions on this item? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next one is our authorization for the school board delegate and alternate delegate voting on the legislative positions. I will turn that over to.
I make a motion that we approve all of the nine legislative positions. I may got a little carried away because there's probably a big difference between a legislative position and a legislative action, but I think these are all good proposals. In my discussions with Ms. Randall, she agrees. I make a motion that we support all nine of these positions. And if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. One comment I will make, this is also being done because the Virginia School Board Association meets next week. Every school division sends a delegate to be able to vote with all of the counties and cities at the Virginia School Board level to create their legislative agenda. And there is already a booklet that outlines many other positions. These are not the only nine things that they will be supporting. There is a whole booklet, but this allows them to be part of that lobbying structure, just for some context. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, we're going to flip back now to our citizen comments. Our citizen comments, three minutes are allotted to each speaker or group. This is an opportunity for the public to comment. This is not a dialogue with board members. This is an opportunity to comment and to let the board know about particular topics. You're encouraged, as a speaker, to provide a copy of the comments to the board clerk. You can, you will identify yourselves by name, organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents that organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose and topic of the comments. The chair reserves the right to restrict total citizen comments to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of board members. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chair. Also, we have the stoplight rule. Green is when you get started. When the yellow light comes on, there is one minute remaining. When the red light comes on, please wrap up your comments within a second or two, because then we're going to move on to our next speaker. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or diverse, or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy eleven thirteen, Public Complaints. I have two individuals who have already signed up this evening. If you are planning to speak and have not signed in, I would ask that you move to the end of your row, so you don't have to climb over everybody, and then be ready to come forward. If you do come forward and have not signed in, there is a clipboard to my right, will be to your left, for you to sign in. So I have Anastasia Sigmund and Maureen Sigmund first, and anybody else, feel free to stand off to the side and then come down. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Anastasia Sigmund, and I want to talk to you all about the Model UN thing that, which I heard the county isn't, was, might not let us go this year. When I first heard about Model UN, I wanted nothing to do with it, did not want to go, none of it. But my parents made me, and I kind of hate to say it, but they were right. It was amazing, and it was one of the best times I've had in middle school. And it like provided the opportunity to make new friends, communicate with people who are outside of your school, all of it. And it was awesome. And like, you learned so much. You learned about parliamentary procedure, how that worked, you learned how to write process papers, and like, how to do a bibliography properly, because that's a huge hurdle in a lot of people's paper writing, along with how to collaborate with people who might not share your same views, and how to be held responsible for stuff that you might not really know how to be held responsible for, right? But if the county takes that away, that's taking away our experience. I have friends who didn't get accepted, who want to do it this year, but if we don't actually go and have the same experience we had in like sixth grade, then that's taking it away. Like, the entire experience and everything that they might have worked for over the past like two and a half years. Thank you.
All right. You're already signed in, so you're good. All right, come on down. And congratulations, Ms. Sigmund.
Thank you. Maureen Sigmund, Garrisonville District. I wanted to reiterate my daughter's point today about Model United Nations. As a student, I participated, as she said, so did my husband, so we really felt strongly about her participating. This is a child that would not read in front of the classroom prior to Model UN. So the fact that she can even come up in here and speak to all of you comes directly from that experience. On top of that, I've never seen a group of kids work so hard for a class where they get no grade. It is done all on flex time. They are researching world events, world topics. They are learning things that are, I mean, I didn't get to participate until high school and college. So I just think that's fantastic. Outside of that, I really enjoy that she gets to explore a college campus and be in a college environment, which a lot of children do not get that experience, especially so young, and I'm glad that the county had the opportunity to do that. I understand that the county may be trying to do something more locally, and I think part of the experience is going and being part of a larger group out of college like William &amp; Mary, that has such a great reputation in our state. So I would really recommend that we do that. We figured out how to do drama and wrestling and basketball and everything else, and I feel like we can figure out a way to do this for these kids in our county, should the schools and the students wish to participate. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers who would wish to address the board? Come on, come on down. If you'll stand off to the side, then I'll know that you're ready to come up. And, and after you speak, then just sign the clipboard behind you. Okay?
So hi, my name's Michaela Irwin. I'm also talking about Model UN today. So it did come to my concern that there might be a chance that we don't do it this year, and that was really alarming for me because I had such a great time in sixth grade, and I've been looking forward to it. But when I reached out to William &amp; Mary, I realized that their COVID restrictions and things were even better than our own. So I didn't know how COVID could be a excuse for why we couldn't go. So I heard that they are requiring vaccinations for all the people that are coming and helping us out there, and that they're doing temperature checks, and that people are keeping our and that they're doing temperature checks and that people are keeping our masks on at all times. So I thought that was really good and that we would be completely safe there. And I'd really like to go this year. So if you guys could reconsider your decision, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on down.
Bridgette Farrell Kuzma, Rock Hill resident and teacher at Garrisonville Elementary. I streamed the last school board meeting, and I was inspired by all the teachers who spoke. They spoke bravely and honestly about so many aspects of what is happening on a daily basis in our schools. I would like to speak to what my experience are as an elementary teacher. I would like to say that I know what we are experiencing is not unique to Stafford County schools. Much of what is happening is a national systemic issue. This year, we are witnessing and dealing with on a daily basis academics and behaviors on a level that has not been seen before. We are being told that they are nobody's fault. Behaviors and academics are clearly a result of what life has looked like since March 2020. But we, the teachers and school staff, are also being tasked with fixing it, or at least dealing with it every day. To give perspective, at one grade level at our school, 58% of students in our grade level, 58, did not meet beginning of year benchmarks in math and/or reading. 39% in the grade level didn't meet those benchmarks in both areas. All of these students receive an intervention of some kind. While we have been given staff to provide the extra support, part of addressing that targeted learning loss, the classroom teachers are largely the ones who are planning the instruction for those groups. Many of these intervention skills are not close to topics and concepts we teach in our grade level. The teachers are creating or finding the materials, teaching others who, how to work with the groups, and teaching the groups ourselves and tracking the data for these groups. Intervention work normally happens in a group setting. That group setting looks different this year, partly due to COVID restrictions. How many students can be within a certain space for a given amount of time? But many of these interventions occur in very small groups or one-on-one due to the varying levels of instruction needed. All of this intervention work is on top of usual grade level instruction for all subjects all day long. It is frustrating that we know so many students are not where they need to be academically, mostly according to people not spending time in the classrooms with students, yet the metrics have not changed. Students will still take the same spring SOL assessment, in addition to all the usual assessments throughout the year and some new ones added in this year. What teachers are doing simply isn't sustainable. I've always enjoyed teaching. I've put in extra time and effort because I enjoy it. This year, I feel like I'm putting an extra time and effort on all the tasks I have to do, simply to cross off the must-dos, not on the fun activities and lessons that I would like to do with and for my students. Just last week, we received an email from HR telling us about a mandatory online training that needs to be completed within 30 days. While one training doesn't seem like that big an issue, given 30 days notice to complete it, it's yet one more thing that we must find time to do. In line with such tasks is managing 504s that general education teachers are now doing. Many of these to-do's simply cannot be completed during contract hours. I appreciate that you all recognize the teacher workload and the mental health and look at them as concerns. I wish I had suggestions or solutions for what we're encountering. Teachers are often told what to do, and saying no is not an option. There's little autonomy in what we do. I believe it is this feeling that will contribute to many teachers saying no by leaving the field completely. It is unfortunate that people who want to teach will leave the teaching job because of all the things that are not teaching that they're being told to do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to come, come on down?
Yes, my name's Bo Smith. My daughter is Elena Smith. She goes to school here at Stafford. I just want to ask the question, why is elementary going to school so early? Was this decided by y'all or people above y'all?
We don't have a dialogue with, with, just give us your comments on, on your feelings on.
Okay, I just feel like they're getting up way too early. Creates a lot of stress in the morning for myself and my wife. Creates a lot of stress for my daughter. I just don't understand why we're getting up so early when I have a 16-year-old who's about to start driving himself and also can get up on his own, doesn't need as much help from everybody else, whereas my younger daughter does. She's only five, creates a lot of stress for her. Seven o'clock in the morning, she wakes up bright and beautiful, all smiles. Five, 5:30 in the morning, not so much. I don't even want to get up at 5:00, 5:30 myself, but I am forced to go to work. Something that I would think my 16-year-old should be preparing himself for in life. But as of right now, my five-year-old is preparing herself to get up at 5:00, 5:30 in the morning to get a job where my 16-year-old gets to sleep until eight. Sometimes the bus picks him up, sometimes it doesn't. Not that big of an ordeal because he'll be driving soon, and it should alleviate a little bit of that bus driver experience that we're having, being so many bus drivers down, which I understand creates a lot of hectic. So I do, on one hand, recognize that it does allow my daughter to get home at the right time and everything, and all the bus drivers are allocated for that, which is appreciated. But at the same time, it does create a lot of stress. And then also, my 16-year-old comes home later than my five-year-old, which does not help in the household as well. If he was home a little bit earlier, he might be able to help out, at least till 3:00, 3:30 when I'm able to get home. But times have to be adjusted for that, and I just don't understand that. I was hoping to get some answers to that, but I don't believe that they will be answered today. But I just want to voice my opinion. Thank you very much.
When you sign in, I think there's an opportunity for your email to be used on there.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much.
Anyone else which is to address the board? All right, I'm not seeing anybody leaping over the chairs to come forward. So with that, then I will close a public comment. We will move on to our board committee reports. Any reports this evening? Dr. Warner.
Yes, Fab met on the fourth, and we have ongoing discussions about the uniform salary scale. Currently, finance and HR will be conducting a market analysis. It's been a few years since the Evergreen Study. We don't expect, Dr., or Mr. Fulmer did not expect that that would be as in-depth, that these categories are already established. But many positions are just not competitive. It's not, we, the original study looked just at different school divisions, but many of our jobs cross over into the private sector, and we need to be more aware of what those market analyses reflect, especially given the competitive labor market that we currently are in. But our scale has to be adjusted. We, it's contributing to the shortage of food service workers, fleet service technicians, and other support staff that the schools need. Mr. Anderson presented preliminary plans to address maintenance and renovation concerns with Drew Middle School in Hartwood. We are unable to expand Hartwood, as we all know, but there are proposed plans for Drew Middle School which would actually increase capacity by 300 to 400 students. Mr. Fulmer presented the quarterly financial report, which you heard tonight. We were advised that the county is proposing a bonus to their employees. This is the same bonus that we awarded last year to our employees. However, this year, we do not have the reserves and the funding source we used. The county will not be providing us the approximately $4.7 million that would require to cover those bonuses. A request was made by the county to create a five-year budget plan. Members of the Fab agreed that this would be a useful target so that taxing and other county decisions could be reflective of our needs. However, given that we need the market analysis on our uniform salary scale and other commitments that an 85% of our budget actually is reflected in compensation, and we also feel that this is something that would be better addressed once a permanent superintendent is selected. We received the market analysis on the service sector employees, and we can anticipate better our compensation costs. That this is a goal that we can work towards, but I don't believe that we, the Fab did not believe we were in a position to proceed with it at this time. Mr. Fulmer also proposed a budget book software so now that we could all do it digitally instead of in paper, which I'm sure that many of our technically advanced board members would truly appreciate. I know how much they love technology. Several items were presented to Fab that are on the agenda for information but are being recommended to be moved to action. First, the purchase of six nine-passenger vans. These currently are available for purchase today. These vehicles might serve as an effective transport for travel students between high schools, semi-athletic teams, and other groups where a bus is not needed and they know, and they do not require CDL licenses. Mr. Anderson will be presenting information about planned HVAC repairs that have already been budgeted, but these expenditures provide an opportunity for a grant that will provide matching funds that can, will allow us to initiate other much-needed repairs in other HVAC systems and mechanical systems in our schools. Staff is currently working on this grant, and it could result in a $6 million to the schools district. Virtual learning licenses will be up for renewal. That is also on the, on for action. And Mr. Fulmer mentioned that is part of the federal funding that we received. You'll find attached to the agenda, under the standing committee reports, two documents. One was prepared by Mr. Barnett, which refers to changes that we are implementing in the substitute teacher plan. And the other one is safety and security recommendations, which will need to be considered in the upcoming budget discussions. For the substitute teachers, Mr. Barnett and his staff developed several proposals, which I think are excellent, which we agreed were excellent. And they will hope to increase this, our pool of substitute teachers. Our ability to fill these requests, our ability to fill requests has dropped from about 90% to 80%. However, there's not really been an increase in demand for substitutes. It's just we no longer have the pool of substitute teachers to pull on as we have in previous years. HR is convening a substitute task force. They are trying to establish minimum service requirements. They have increased their community and targeted outreach for recruitment. The goal is to expand the number of daily building subs at each school, increase the rate of pay for the daily building subs, increase the pay rate for licensed retirees currently in non-long-term or daily subpositions, and to offer turnout incentives based on the number of days worked in a quarter. This implementation is proposed to begin on December 1st. So I recommend that you review those documents. And I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Any standing committee reports? All right, hearing none. Well, moving on to board member comments. Who wants to start us off? Somebody volunteer? Any volunteer? Ms. Hollerback?
Mine's quick. First, I want to start off by saying congratulations to Ms. Young for her election to the Board of Supervisors. Hope to see, hope to see you, hope to see you. Hope to see some good things happen while you're up there. Madam Chair, are we extending an invite to all the new school board members to attend at the next meeting? I think it would be a nice little, having us all in the same room one last time. If we could make that happen. And I also just wanted to remind parents that we are closed this Thursday and Friday. We know it was a little bit short notice, so just a little reminder. Thanks.
All right, who's next? Ms. Randall, start us.
I would also like to congratulate Ms. Young for her new seat on the Board of Supervisors. I'd like to welcome back Dr. Chase to her seat on our board. And welcome Maureen Sigmund, who's here. She spoke with us. Maya Guy, she's here. Wave. And Alyssa Halsted, who is watching us from home. I'd like to welcome them to our board as well. I'm interested this evening in our conversation about some of the things that we can try to discuss and find. I was very happy that Mr. Reichert sent us a very involved list of things that our teachers are being asked to do. And as I mentioned in my comments last time, I'm looking for ways to audit what we ask and, and other ways that we can help. And I know that comes sometimes in the building and sometimes from staff. And if there's ever an opportunity for us to be a part of that as well, we'd like to be. So that's all. Keeping it brief tonight. Thank you.
I'd like to add my congratulations to Ms. Young, and that, that makes two former school board members that will be sitting supervisors starting January 1st. So congratulations. And also to the new school board members, and of course, to Dr. Chase. What a difference a week makes. I was coming down here thinking, oh, my gosh, a week ago. It was getting ready to rain and be a long, long day. So congratulations. I look forward to working with our new members and also working with Dr. Chase for her term. I wanted to congratulate the participants in the Band Together Against Hunger event that was held at Mountain View High School. It, it takes a lot to put that together. And, you know, not just the, you know, the students, the, the staff, and the parents. Pretty, pretty amazing. Once, once again, a wonderful performance. And it was even more special for me because of Mr. Doug Armstrong was there. He was the former band director at Mountain View and also was at AG Wright. And he is the person that started Band Together Against Hunger. And they allowed him to be the guest conductor at the end when all the, the bands and the color guards from all the high schools are out in the field to play the grand finale. So it was, it was, it was good to see him. He, he said he was, he has failed at retirement. So he's had three, three times he tried to retire, and he is at a middle school. I think he said in the Northern Neck, starting from scratch a band program. So lucky them. Also, I wanted to recognize and thank Robert Potter, who is the bus driver of bus number 25. Mr. Potter sent me an email just a couple of weeks ago saying that there is a light in, in my district at Furnace Road and Garrisonville Road, and that his bus in the afternoon has to sit through that light sometimes for three cycles. He said that particular light only allows three vehicles to go through a green light. And I thought, gee, I wonder how many minutes that adds to, you know, this delay that we're having in the afternoon. So I sent it to, you know, Dr. Jones, and also sent it to the Rock Hill representative on the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee. And she, she brought it to the committee's attention, but she also, on her own initiative, called VDOT. And she got a response from VDOT just a few days ago that said they had adjusted the light, and if there's any, you know, further relief needed, to please let them know. So we let Mr. Potter know, and he wrote back, you know, a couple of days later saying, it's better. You know, it, it seems to be working, so we're going to be monitoring that. But I know that Dr. Jones passed that along to transportation, and I am assuming that we are going to look for that kind of input from, you know, all our drivers because they know firsthand, you know, where these backups are. So, you know, not just are we working here, but now we've got, you know, the community involved as well. So thank you to Mr. Potter and to Dana Brown, my representative on the, the Ad Hoc Transportation Committee, for, you know, making some improvements to these afternoon schedules. And my last comment has to do with the Model UN. I received just, you know, a couple of days ago, an email from a parent that was concerned, you know, that we may not be able to participate. And, you know, I was not aware that, that that had been an issue, but I wrote back to the parent saying that I personally support it because my daughter participated in it, and it was a fantastic experience. And I sent it to Dr. Jones, and he responded as well. And then I shared that, those emails with, with the school board. And my understanding, Dr. Jones, is that we are moving forward with that, and it is our intent to be able to participate. And the parent actually had written back and gave a whole list of the mitigation that the William &amp; Mary has taken is, you know, is explained by, you know, one of our students this evening. And there was even, you know, some more measures that were, were in that, which, which has been shared with the board. So I hope that we are able to do that because it is an amazing experience, you know, for our, our young students. And what an inspiration as they're moving forward, you know, in their middle school and then their high school career as to, you know, what plans they may have. My daughter, just last year, was able to work as an intern with the, the EU mission to the UN in New York. And that was, that was a pretty neat experience for her. And I, I like to think it all started back, you know, when she went to the one down at William &amp; Mary. Thank you.
Dr. Warner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to congratulate Ms. Young for her new position on the Board of Supervisors. And I want to say how grateful I am that Dr. Chase will be staying with us on the school board. But I also want to welcome our new school board members. It will be, it will be good to work with, with new, bring in new ideas and be good to work with new people. And I look forward to the, the opportunity. I do want to say that I've had the opportunity to visit several of the schools in my district. And it's just such, seeing the kids in the school is, is what really kind of makes you realize that what you're doing is worth it. And since the school year.
And since the school year started, and seeing how the kids have, have really kind of settled into a groove, and I know how hard the teachers are working, I just want to say that it, it's, it's a good feeling to see that. There's some great teachers out there. The art teacher at Kate Waller Barrett has done some tremendous things with the students there. The music department at Shirley Heim, the outdoor classrooms at Wide Water, and the, you know, the, the open spaces at Moncur have created a good learning environment for pullouts and, and the remediation that we've been striving to get for our students. So I just want to thank everybody for all the work they're doing, congratulate our new school board members, and thank you.
So I have congratulated Ms. Young prior to this evening, and I will be sure that she knows that all of us have congratulated her tonight. And I'd also like to congratulate our new school board members. It's a very fulfilling position to have, and it's a very challenging position to have that gives us a lot of opportunities to be creative and do problem solving and, and all that kind of thing. I also wanted to just, I know, I know Mr. Fulmer noted that the Board of Supervisors had supported transportation recently and also allowed for some, quite a lot of county pass-through funds. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the supervisors for, for that support. I was at the CGS governing board meeting recently, and I wanted to share with this board, one of the things that, that this board had started shortly before I got on it, was a real effort to look at ours, our sort of more rigorous academic programs to see to what extent the students enrolled in those programs actually looked like the students enrolled in our schools. And so to what degree were sort of, you know, it, it was the kind of thing where the majority of students in these programs were white students, but the majority of our students is much more diverse. And so I wanted to report back for CGS, the Stafford County CGS has actually done quite a good job in the numbers looking consistent with what our school system looks like. That cannot be said for the other counties that, that participate in CGS. But for Stafford, I want to praise our staff for making that effort and, and helping to make that happen, because it, it does make a difference. I also just wanted to mention that on Saturday, I went to get a vaccine booster, and I saw quite a few children between the ages of five and 11. And I wonder if our staff has started looking at the possibility of providing vaccine clinics at our elementary schools for families that are interested in that? Because, you know, it's a lot to have to give up your weekend to take your child to get a vaccine. And if we can actually provide that service at our schools, that might be much appreciated. But I, I don't know whether that's an option. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. Again, still the same, congratulations to all of our, to all of our newly elected, especially Ms. Young, but also to all those who are taking that, that leap into elected service. Anybody who follows my Facebook, I do talk about that Teddy Roosevelt quote. So for those who ran, for those who didn't, and support those who have run, who have put themselves in the arena. It's not always easy sitting up here, but we did run to do this. However, the more things that are constructive and that can be brought as ideas, I just want to thank all those who have in the past and will in the future embrace being a part of this process. It is one of the most important things in our government, is to have elected school board members, in my opinion, as well as, as opposed to appointed, which some places still do have and also are elected. When people talk about getting involved, you can make the hugest impact in your local level. There are advisory committees. There are many things you can do. As we begin, I hope to open our schools more, to have our parents part of our process. That's where many of us, I know, got started, being anything from co-olators to greeters to everything. So again, congratulations to all who have run and have been elected. It's going to be a great ride, and remember why you're doing it. One thing I wanted to bring up, I'm going to try and not hit the growth thing, but we'll get that later, is something that came up when we were talking in our Fine Arts Advisory Committee last night. There's a lot of discussion about how our fine arts tend to be offered on XY. And we're also moving to four-by-four. And I did ask that evening, but I will ask my CTE experts, because it is not me, and I shared it with one board member today. If our CTEs are also XY, we really want to be looking at our schedule to make sure that kids are getting a broad variety of their courses. Fine Arts, I'm a huge supporter. I love Band Together to Fight Hunger. I have one that, Fine Arts is really a very much a part of her education. CTE, we just want to be sure that how our scheduling is working, that we are not limiting our students and, or an inability to continue in those. We had a couple of students come and tell us their stories about that, and I think we'll hear more. So I'm just saying that. I know as a board, we don't as much get into scheduling, but as Dr. Chase, sort of the direction that we, we provide is very, very important. And I would hate for students who want to either take those activities that we just really, I hope we look at our schedule as we look at a lot of things in the coming months, to just make sure that those opportunities are available and that we look at that. So that's just a broad comment. I think that also, with regard to teacher workload, teaching XYs and four-by-fours is very difficult. And so just something I hope that the board and our instructional staff will look at, because that is something I'm beginning to hear, at least in the fine arts area, but I was told maybe some other areas as well. So, Dr. Jones.
Good evening. Just three quick comments. First of all, I want to congratulate Stafford High School, and wish them best of luck in the southeastern theater conferences. It looks like we're one of the best in the country, if not best in the world. So I want to congratulate them on that accomplishment. We did have several of our psychologists here earlier. I'm not sure if they're still here tonight or not. But yesterday, I did have an opportunity to speak to not only our school psychologists, but our diagnosticians. And, and we're fortunate to have those folks. You know, lots of school divisions have difficulty finding school psychologists. We're not fully complimented, but we're in better shape than most. And Madam Chair, may I speak to two issues that came up? The first one is Model UN. I spent a good portion of my day addressing that. I know Dr. Greider has also worked with Dr. Felenger. So we are going to go forward with that. It, it may be different, because it's a different year. So I just want to qualify that, but we do plan to participate in Model UN. And then in terms of the vaccine clinics, you may or may not be aware that we sent out a survey, I believe it was yesterday, to try to assess the number of folks that are interested in, in getting vaccines. We're doing that in collaboration with the Rappahannock Area Health Department. So we are partnering with them to make sure we give them the, the numbers, and then we will organize clinics based on the, on the request. So I think we actually have two clinics already scheduled, if I remember correctly.
Excellent. Thank you. Thanks for those updates. Moving on now to our information items. I may have the numbering wrong, but I will go with the first. The first one is about the six multipurpose vehicles that were mentioned, I believe, by Mr. Fulmer and Dr. Warner, as already being reviewed by the Fab. These are bus, vehicles that I understand we were able to find that are not being used by some other, and we would like to jump in and, and use them. Is that correct, Mr. Fulmer?
Could I make a motion that we move this to action?
Okay.
All right. Any comment on moving this to action? All right. All those in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Motion to approve the purchase of six nine-passenger multipurpose vehicles.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? I see Mr. Fulmer's standing there, so he's ready. Ms. Neely.
Madam Chairman, I'm going to support this motion, but I do have a question. Mr. Fulmer, will we be able to use these vans to transport travel students if we don't have regular buses available for them, so we can try to get them at their travel school?
Absolutely. That's one of the, one of the key areas that we're going to target with them. You know, obviously, there are only nine-passenger vans, mini buses, but so we have, you know, some of our travel programs are nine or less, you know, between the schools, so there will be a perfect opportunity to use them.
Good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say, great job finding vehicles to purchase in the current, in the current climate. So, thank you.
Yeah. And thank you for supporting, pushing this through. Appreciate it.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Fulmer, you may get in a bus and go get those buses.
I have a question. Does Mr. Fulmer have a CDL? What is that? License? No, no.
These don't require them.
These don't require them. These don't require them.
Oh, so you're going to drive these instead of the big yellow? All right. That'll work.
All right. The next item is concerning the construction contract to Waco for 3.4, a little over 3.4 million dollars for the repair of the mechanical systems and finishes at North Stafford High School, using bond funds and subject to appropriation. So I now-
I see Mr. Anderson coming forward, so.
Before we begin, I'd like to make a motion that we move this to action and then give Mr. Anderson. He was very excited about this grant possibility, because it will result in a lot of money to the, the county, and these are projects that we already have budgeted. So the sooner we expedite these projects, the better we'll be. So motion to move this to action.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding-
I do have a question. And not, I'm going to support this, because I, I think it's something that needs to be done. But my question is, if this work is not going to happen until May, and we have another meeting coming up in December, is, what, what is the urgency to do it? And I'm, I'm assuming there is summer, you wouldn't be asking for it, but if you could just articulate that, it would be helpful for me.
Yes, thank you. This is, we've had some unusual supply chain disruptions. They're really hitting the construction industry hard. And so normally, we would have awarded this type of contract in the spring, and we would have had plenty of time to get it done over the summer. Now, we've already bid it early, so we were prepared for the disruption, but we still think we've got some issues and some risk of not having it in time to have a, because it's a big project, and we want to hit that date. That's, that's why I'm requesting it be moved to action.
Thank you. That, that explains it, because just looking at it on its face, that, you know, there's no urgency there.
Right.
It's the old COVID, can't get it.
Yep.
Answer, which is-
Terrible.
It is. It's everything.
All right. So all those in favor of moving this to action, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Madam Chairman, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, and I'm going to say it's on behalf of Ms. Young, because this school is in her district, and so I'm going to move that this be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions to Ms., for Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Anderson, when is this grant application due that these are linked to?
So we have been working on a grant, and these are matching funds that would be used for the grant, and it's due on November 15th, so next Monday. We're hoping to submit it tomorrow.
All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Submit. All right. Our next one is about the purchase of K through eight virtual learning licenses and resources for fully virtual Stafford County Public School Service students. This would be, all right.
1303 or something?
Yes. So are there any questions? I know that there is a, a request, but are there questions about this particular item first?
Now, I think this is in compliance with the state code that requires us to provide virtual learning opportunities for students. Ms. Neely.
I have a question. This is just a, a question I have. Students could choose to be, or parents could choose for their students to be virtual or, or, you know, in school at the beginning of the year.
Can you make sure your mic's on? Sorry.
It, it is on, it's just not long enough. I'm kind of far here. At the beginning of the year, parents can make a choice. Can parents choose now if they want to switch from, you know, in-school instruction to virtual? They can? Okay. I, I just, I, I, that's important, because at one point, I think the, the answer was different. So if that, that's a choice, then-
Because I'm likely to confirm.
Well, I think, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong again. From what I understand, the state, obviously, the, the state law, Senate Bill 1303, we have to offer in-person instruction. And so we're more concerned about students transitioning from virtual to, back to in-person. So the, the law is really designed to do that. We really, we don't want students going the opposite direction. So we, you may remember initially, we were going to limit the, the period of enrollment for virtual. We, we extended that. I think we've extended, extended it long enough. So at this point, we, we want to begin to try to minimize that. Am I, am I getting that wrong, Jan?
Um, sure. Regarding elementary, elementary, the vaccinations weren't available. So elementary has stayed open. Virtual Virginia, our secondary solution, was closed. So we're hoping, as students, I know Carrie and I have talked, and I know that we are thinking that since vaccinations are available for younger students, and they're starting to get those, that we'll see, that we'll be able to close that. But that's why the elementary was left open. So currently, if a student is in school, they cannot transfer to Virtual Virginia? Carrie, Carrie, no, not Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia is closed. That's a secondary. That's, that's middle and high. I'm just looking on here. So the, the fuel education, the K-12, Inc. solution for elementary, we did leave that open. Two different resources? I, I'm just looking at this, because I'm assuming that we have already paid for what we've engaged in? Or is this for, is this for students that are currently in the program, or is this for future students in the program? This is an estimation for our year funding based on what we projected. So those students, the Virtual Virginia students are committed in the secondary? We hope. So the reason why we have not paid for it yet, especially the fuel education piece, is because that is a month-by-month invoicing, and that all had to be set up and reconciled, et cetera. So this will pay for the students that are enrolled currently. Okay. That, that's, that's what I, I didn't know if this is for adding students or if it's what's there. So we're basically- It's what's there. We're paying our bill for the students that started in August through the end of the school year. Up through the enrollment. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr.
Sure. Are there any other questions? Okay. I have one, because I'm trying to make sure I understood that as, as well. Are these funds, this is actually probably Mr. Fulmer's question, are these part of the ESER and every other, every, every other reiteration of CARES Act? That's not called CARES Act. But the charts that you had up there, I believe this was covered. I'm just trying to make sure I underst-
Yeah. In fact, I tried to highlight them specifically to make sure.
I thought you did, so I'm now getting it better, but I just wanted to-
Yeah. We're using ESER 1 and ESER 3, I believe. Yep.
All right. That was what I remembered, that they were listed. I was just trying to pull those, both, so that these will be, so the, this authorizes, because how ESER is, we have to spend it and get reimbursed. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. So this is allowing you to send the invoice, whilst we pay for it. Okay.
And can I ask a-
Yes, Dr.
So, Mr. Fulmer, or Dr. Strike, or Ms. Neely, so this is budgeting for the K-12, or the, I'm sorry, K through five. If some of these students get vaccinated and decide to come back for in-person instruction, might there be some savings, because they will, okay, so-
This is a monthly thing, yeah.
Right. Just, just, just checking to see, because, because I, I have spoken to parents who told me that when the vaccine became available, their child would be receiving it, and their child would be coming back to school. So just was curious if that, if that would be the case. Thank you.
Ms. Neely, oh, I didn't know if that was, okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. Is there a thought to move this to action? All right, is there a thought to move this to action?
Motion to move this item to action.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all those in favor of moving this to action this evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there a follow-on motion?
Motion to approve the purchase of the virtual schooling for elementary, middle school and high school.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Our next information item, or our first information item now, is about the adoption of proposed amendments to Policy 2411. This is being brought, this was brought by, at the request of staff and students, the Governance Committee had the, really pleasure of seeing the students come and present this with their faculty advisors, it was really a wonderful opportunity to have those students come and bring that to us and update it, and I know they worked on a, a committee to review this, so, just like we had recently, we had something come from our, from a, a teacher and, and staff members about policies that need to be changed, this is another one as well, and it was student-led, which was awesome. Dr. Jones, did you?
Madam Chair, I just want to point out, those students are present tonight.
Excellent, we're, come on, go ahead, stand up, please, come on forward.
And, and faculty.
Yes, so we are going to sort of broaden having them come up, because, thank you, Ms. Boatwright, I thought they were all there, but.
Awesome friends, so good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members and Dr. Jones, it gives me great pleasure to introduce our two guest presenters tonight, so we have Ms. Tiffany Kopzak, who is a teacher at Colonial Forge, she teaches journalism, and we also have Zamari Holly, who is the editor-in-chief of the student newspaper at Stafford High, The Smoke Signal, so they will come and do a presentation for us.
Thank you, Ms. Boatwright, good evening, Madam Chair, Board and Dr. Jones, it is my pleasure to speak here tonight about this policy, my name is Tiffany Kopzak, I'm a 15-year veteran of the English Classroom and Publications, I advise the yearbook and the newspaper, and I'm also the, the Secretary of the Virginia Association of Journalism Teachers and Advisors, which is kind of how this got started. I've been working with a national organization trying to support student journalism rights under the First Amendment, part of that was to research our own policy and kind of see where it's at in terms of those rights. Two things became immediately apparent, first, the current SCPS policy does not reflect the actual policies, sorry, practices within the district, and second, it doesn't offer the guidelines that neighboring districts and model policies do. So I reached out to Dr. Kizner and we talked about updating the policy using a committee of stakeholders, he got Dr. Nichols involved, and as you said, it was a fantastic committee between students and staff, advisors and principals, there was much discussion, there was much agreement, and we're happy to say the final policy before you is one that we did all agree on, which is exciting. The proposed policy itself has already been well-vetted and is based on a variety of Supreme Court cases rather than the one of the current policy. We also have added a policy now that is more detailed, more accurate, more descriptive, and includes eight guidelines to the previous four. One of the other benefits of the committee was a stronger understanding of how the press office actually operates in a scholastic classroom, there is a misconception that student journalists work independently without oversight when the reality is much more layered than that. In the yearbook program, there's a chief, a copy editor and a section editor who all receive extra training and coaching to help journalists through their new, through their stories. Newspapers is very similar, my job is to advise, my job as a nation, when you look at the national curriculum, is not the teacher of the class, but the advisor of the program, so I'm there to help guide. Their roles and responsibilities are part of the county, of the county journalism and photojournalism curricula, so if you look at what we're actually supposed to teaching, we are supposed to be teaching them to be independent thinkers and make decisions based on ethics and law, and to, to take responsibility not only for their own work but coaching and monitoring the work of others. Again, the current policy, which establishes the teacher as editor-in-chief and the principal as the advisor, directly contradicts this curriculum and national standards, and again, the practice as well, again, this proposed policy better represents what the class is and its program are designed to do. The policy adjustments begin by change in the very beginning to rights and responsibilities rather than requirements, when students have clear parameters, they stop asking can we, and start asking more interesting questions, how can we cover this effectively, what do our readers need to know, how does the law apply, what are ethical, ethical considerations? These are questions that build their confidence in problem-solving skills, questions that make them critical thinkers. At this point, I want to pass it over to Zamari Holly, again, she is editor-in-chief of Stafford High School Paper, she's been a content editor and business manager, this is probably a good time to manage that, mentioned that Mr. Fulmer does not control our budget, publications do pay for their own publications, which also counteracts the current policy which says that the school is a publisher. She is the best one to speak, back to Zamari, about how her program is organized and what, what about this proposed policy is beneficial to her as a student journalist and editor. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members and Dr. Jones, like Ms. Kopzak stated, I was not always editor-in-chief, and joining The Smoke Signal, I started off as a content editor, I then became a business editor, associate editor, and now as a senior at Stafford, I am editor-in-chief of The Smoke Signal newspaper. To touch on some of the decisions I had to make upon being chosen to lead our publication, one of the tasks that fell upon me was to select our editorial board, these are students experienced in journalism and deemed qualified to represent and contribute to the newspaper with the help and support of our advisor. As stated in the proposed policy, responsible for The Smoke Signal, we have a process that goes in the order of content, copy, chief and advisor. If an article is to be pitched, it starts off as an idea, like most things do, each article goes through this assembly line, our content editor is trained to examine the article in its roughest form and ensure that the writer's point comes across clearly and their angle is presented properly. The copy editor then decides each sentence makes sense, making sure that things are grammatically correct and that the chosen punctuation is appropriate. As editor-in-chief, my personal approach, once the article comes to me, is a little more of a suggestive manner, I personally like to figure out how this article can overall be better as an, a piece in addition to our issues. Our advisor is in the final eye, as our teacher, coach and overall journalism guide, they provide input to provide, to improve our pieces as well. We as editorial staff are coached by our advisor with guidance, training and mentorship when need be, as expressed on page five of our proposed policy. We have this process for every piece of content to ensure that the information is well-produced and that our editors extend beyond this assembly line as well. We have social media editors, photographers, dedicated managing editors and attentive design editors as well. As leader of this staff, I can assure you, we are constantly making decisions to achieve the best possible paper that we can, using our training and our advice from our advisor. Though we are a newspaper, within our school, we also have publications such as the yearbook, in the Stafford's case, it is the Indian Legend, the Literary Magazine, which is our native, as well as our podcast, In the Loop, which streams on Spotify promoting positive content, conversation and talk, also led by student journalists. I am a firm believer that this proposed bill will prepare us better for the real world that is journalism, it gives us a much clearer lining to follow and it's a much better representation of what we stand for as student journalists and what goes on in our classroom as well as during our flex time when we meet as well. So with that, I thank you and I hope that you will take the bill into consideration.
Thank you so much for coming and giving us the student perspective, that's the one that we, we desire, and we enjoyed so much meeting you, I think I can speak on behalf of the Governance Committee, and we're, thank you all for coming this evening and waiting to present this, this is such great work. Ms. Boatwright, do you have any closing comments or just giving you the final?
No, I would just like to say, it was such a pleasure to work with the group, having the students and the teachers and our high school principals, Dr. Nichols, it was, it was such a pleasure to have the opportunity to work with them and for them bringing this to our attention that it needed to reflect what we are actually doing in school.
Too bad all of the policies don't work this way, that you get this, get this nice group to help write them, because this is very well-written and a lot of work has gone into it, so. Any questions from the Board? We have a wonderful group here.
Madam Chair, and I, I just think maybe it would be helpful if you explained to the, the, the students and their advisor, that our policy does not permit us to move this to action tonight, if the fact that we're not voting on it tonight does not reflect that there's any, you know, issue with it, but that we try to follow our policy and, Ms. Boatwright, does our policy not require it beyond two times for information?
That's exactly right, and they are aware that it will be coming back to the, to the December meeting.
So we hope to see you in December. On one of our action items. Again, thank you all so much for coming and giving us that perspective, and we look forward to reviewing and hopefully approving this policy in December, so, we hope to see you back.
Great work.
Yes, great work. Woo! Next, speaking of policies, there was a review done through the Governance Committee of the 3,000 series policies, I don't, if anybody has any burning issues with any of them, let me know.
No, Ms. Boatwright, this is a tough one, no change.
No change at all.
There are no changes in any of these, these, these remained as written, Ms. Boatwright went over these at the last governance meeting, this is actually the second time that, I think this is the second time both these policies, the student publication policy or media policy and these 3,000 policies have been on, so, we will see them again. So, then moving on to our last two discussion items or information items is discussion regarding the teacher and staff workload, additional duties related to COVID-19 and the state legislative and local requirements and mandates. I will speak first, I know Dr. Warner was the second, so I will give you an opportunity after this.
Part of the reason of putting this on was just to have the, the Board begin that process of understanding where the additional requirements, to work with staff, to understand, are there things that can be eliminated or put on hold or pause during this unprecedented time, and most people know I hate using that word, but I, there's no other way to say it. One of the things that has come to mind, or has been told to us, that the bus drivers, it appears that there now may be drivers on most of the routes so that we can be eliminating the double and triple runs that were going on, but we also want to make sure we have requirements in place to make sure that that can continue. Something I want to also just make sure that people and parents and those who maybe, maybe aren't in our school system or don't, the COVID-19 cleaning measures and requirements on staff are, are immense, they, they are not, it is not when you hear the bell ring and everybody runs out like we used to and come back and, and in, those are still in place and they, it sounds like it's five or 10 minutes, but it's five or 10 minutes where our staff does not get that opportunity to breathe, take a second and recover. So, we were, we are aware of the lunch, lunch periods and the absence of, of planning periods, some of the recommendations and things that have been passed about trying to get more support in the para and the substitutes are things that we are working on. However, I just would like to say to staff, continue to come forward with ideas, we've heard about some of the additional or required training, some of those, I think we would, I, for me, I would be asking staff, how much can we make sure that the demands that we are doing, do they directly impact student learning? And I think perhaps for this particular year, that that standard may need to be loosened to the extent of where student learning is. Most important thing we can have in the classroom is a competent and sane teacher, and I know that this year is really putting those on there, so, I will also turn over to Dr. Warner, just if there were any comments as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair, we are deeply concerned about the, the workload that the teachers are currently experiencing, teachers make a million decisions over the course of the day, and things like planning time are a valuable asset and making sure that they can address the needs of all their students. I guess my goal is that we find ways that we can streamline some of the extra duties that they've been given, maybe even, you know, I hear a lot of them say that they're taking reports home and writing them on weekends, maybe if there's ways to consolidate those so that they don't have to make data entry in multiple locations and do multiple reports that basically provide similar or comparable information. I think we, we are, you know, the Fab had good discussion about the plans for adding substitute teachers, which I know has been a big burden, and fortunately, Mr. Barnett and his staff were very, very capable of coming up with some great ideas that I think will help alleviate some of that. We are listening and we are, we would like to see if there's ways that we can help minimize some of the stress on, on teachers and make sure that they're focused on the task that's most important, and that's educating the kids.
Exactly, I just wanted to make one final comment, then I am going to just ask Dr. Jones, sort of like we talked earlier today about that bigger picture, to my colleagues who will be there, who will be here come the next legislative session, I will be at home watching it, but, one thing that concerns me, and Dr. Jones and I had a, a discussion about, is really monitoring what legislative requirements are coming out of our, our legislative body for our teachers. Some, we need to make sure that they sunset, some we do not, the problem becomes, once something usually is added to a teacher or education staff member's plate, there never seems to be a way that it's removed, just, that's my impression. And I just ask that this Board, talking with your legislators, we really need to make sure that the teacher's voice is heard on those requirements, or if more requirements are coming, what is being taken off, because there is only some, there are so many hours in the day, we need to, so I would just ask if the Legislative Committee gets reformed, that would be one area I would really suggest, because that's where the mode, I am always concerned when we add on, we never seem to take off, so. Dr. Jones, I know just the broad discussion you and I maybe had might be helpful.
Well, I'll just add, one of the things that's, may not be perceived as new, but as new, is that we, we don't have the luxury of not providing, doing SOL testing, that is really more of a federal requirement that's been placed upon the state, but the state is trying to shift, shift the focus of the SOL assessments towards growth, so, so that we know because of the pandemic where kids are, where students are. I think most educators endorse the idea that we're focusing on growth rather than, than you made it or you didn't make it, so that view primarily is a positive, but it is something that for many teachers feels like an additional burden. And then there are also some, some assessments in, in reading and math, again, part of that is aimed at trying to assess where students are, that has not always been required across all grade levels, but it is now. And again, it's, it, it feels like something extra, but I, I think for most of us, given the impact of the pandemic, those assessments are important. You know, you know the state several years ago did reduce the number of SOL tests, they're, if you're going to look at a legislative issue, you may want to continue to focus on that as a, as a governing body, and then I'll, I'll invite staff to make any additional comments, but, I do want to, I do also want to make the mark about the Title IX training that was referenced earlier, that is required by law, all of us have to do that, every single staff member has to participate in that, so that is a legal requirement that, that, that we, we have to have completed by December 3rd. And that is something that, again, it's a legal requirement, so, you can't negotiate that.
Any comments from anybody else? I know, I see the chiefs here, if you have any comments, I don't want to certainly cut off any.
I think in the area of assessments, if those are, if the, this growth model is embraced, perhaps going to some of the things that have been talked about with the support staff cap, some, some of those things, we need to make those connections between, as we come out of the, a pandemic, hopefully, and we want to look towards growth so we can be supporting our students, these are the people we're going to need, and perhaps that can be part of the broader story, because we've talked about that support cap, actually, I think, okay, maybe not since I've been on the Board, but at least four or five years, it comes up, but perhaps this year, there may be a even stronger ability to look at that number at, at the state, I don't know, just a thought.
Just as a reminder, the support cap is something was placed right around the time of the recession, that cap still exists.
I know.
So, that's, and that cap has a direct impact on revenue as well as positions, and so, most folks, I don't want to get into a deep, too deep of a conversation about state budgets, but public schools still aren't being funded like they were pre-recession. There's more dollars, but not necessarily more funding. There's more dollars, but not necessarily more funding.
Ms. Randall?
So you mentioned that some of these testings are required. Required by who? Is it from us or for state or from?
By state.
By state, okay. And also for the Title IX training, was it just found out about? Or was it known about like earlier and staff was just notified? Or how did timing of that work?
I'm not sure Mr. Barnett's online or not. Do we know if he's online? He can speak to that.
I am online. I don't know if folks can hear me. I apologize. I'll try to speak up. We have been aware that this training requirement was going to be coming down for some time. And Mrs. Boatwright has been working with outside counsel to develop that training. And also just a quick note, I apologize for being virtual and hazy. Dr. Jones, no, I'm home with a sick child tonight, so thank you for letting me have this privilege. But Mrs. Boatwright worked with outside counsel to develop that training to try to make the, what we were asking staff to complete as narrow as possible while honoring the spirit and the requirements of the law. But, you know, for folks that were asking, you know, is it just one more thing? Trust me, we agree. It's not something that we would have wanted to have sent out at this juncture in time. But we had been trying to work it out to a point where we can make it as small of an ask as possible.
Mr. Barnett, if you don't mind, I believe that the way we're rolling that out, we're trying to, we've tried to create opportunities for teachers to do that on their own time so that it, you know, so it's sort of a webinar format, if I remember correctly. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And also, one of the things that has come up in all the different levels that I've spoken to teachers and staff is even the lunch situation. It's something that I asked about early on, is where are the kids eating lunch? Are they eating in the cafeteria, are they eating in the classrooms? And one of the things that I'm hearing, sometimes the cafeterias aren't being utilized, especially in the middle school, because they use it for their, if they don't have a sub and the kids have to go into the cafeteria to be watched and be on their computers is somewhat what I'm understanding. And then also that teachers, you know, it seems like a small thing. But in middle school, I know they've not had an unencumbered lunch. They eat lunch in the cafeteria with the kids, but at a table where they can still have adult conversation. And one of the things that is happening with students eating in classrooms at all levels is this isolating of some of the educators for just that 20 minutes or that 30 minutes where they can talk them with each other, you know, whether it be commiserate, whether it be an encouragement, whether it be anything. And, you know, they take a bite of a sandwich and then someone says, can you open my milk? Can you give me a ketchup? Can you get me a straw? They can't move around the room, so the teacher's the one doing it all. And she doesn't even get a, or he doesn't even get a lunch. And so I just feel like, you know, it, just even the lunch, if we can figure out the lunch for some of these teachers. I mean, I would love to say we can figure out the planning, we can figure out these. And I'm just, you know, it's an elephant. We have to try it one bite at a time. But can we figure out the lunch so that these teachers can be social during their lunch? The kids, of course, are being social. If it requires, you know, assistance from, I don't know, PTAs or retired folks or something that, you know, they just get help so they can be social, so they can consume a lunch, so they can drink enough water, so they can go to the bathroom, if we can just figure out that, I would love it. Thank you, Dr. Greider.
Sure. So when I met with the middle school principals initially, we talked about what we wanted to do with lunch this year. And one of the major factors was contact tracing. So they felt like to be able to have lunch in the way that they'd had it previously, where you'd have a whole bunch of kids in the cafeteria, that there was no way that they would be able to arrange seating such that students were sitting in the same seats every day. And so because of contact tracing, they determined that they needed to have lunch in different places. So different schools have different ways in which students eat lunch. Some will eat in the cafeteria, some will eat in classrooms, some switch it up. So students eat in classrooms on one day and students eat in the cafeteria on another day. So it does vary by school because each school building is different and the number of students in each school is different. So they have to make accommodations for that. Most of our middle schools run three lunches currently. In, I want to say, four or five of our schools, they usually run five to six lunches during the school year. Because we have a condensed amount of time, we're trying to get as many students through the line as we possibly can, we've reduced the amount of lunches. And so that's helped to some extent in terms of getting students through the line and getting students fed. But it was really the contact tracing that was really the main reason why the principals decided they wanted to go with lunch as it is.
So why is it that high school can eat lunch in the cafeteria with contact tracing and not middle school?
I can't speak to what high school is doing.
I understand, but I'm just saying that, you know, we're allowing them in there and it's not an issue at high school, but it's an issue in middle?
Well, there are some students that are eating in the cafeteria in middle school. It's just that they're not all eating in the cafeteria in the middle school. Because the cafeteria doesn't have space. You can't have any social distancing or anything like that.
Have we at least made sure that PE, band, chorus, strings are all in the cafeteria and not on their laps? Or as I saw in a picture, 189 students sitting on the gym floor?
So at the very beginning of the year, like the third day of school or the second day of school, there were students that ate on the floor and that situation was rectified at that particular school.
Good.
And I can't remember what the issue was for that. But yes, for the most part, as far as I know, I think that the band and the chorus, if they're eating during that time, they are eating in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Yeah. So they, so yeah, you don't want them.
No.
Now, of course, if a kid, if a kid chose to eat on the floor, I suppose that the teacher would allow him to do that. I don't know. But anyway, I do think, I do think they're using cafeteria for that.
So, you know, one of the things that's also been a thing that was done for safety and for a million reasons in the middle school was they were never allowed to have backpacks. And now they're allowed to have backpacks because they can't use lockers. Is there a time now that we're, you know, we have vaccinations? We, but to get these backpack, or to get these kids from carrying, you know, these heavy backpacks and start being allowed to use the lockers again?
So remember, we talked about, we wanted to have students socially distanced as much as possible. When you have students using the lockers in the hallway in many of our schools during a class change, it's wall-to-wall kids and.
Four minutes?
What's that?
It's only like four minutes?
Yeah, but it's wall-to-wall, I mean, kids are right on top of each other. So the decision was made, let's not use the lockers and instead let's go ahead and use the classrooms. Because they're trying to space out classrooms as much as possible. That's one of the other things that hasn't been mentioned a lot, but teachers are really still trying to keep kids separated in the classroom as much as possible. So we know with a large number of kids, that's really not easy, but that is something that they've been trying to do as well.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
I have a question, and I'm not looking for an answer this evening, but, you know, I'd like to get it at some point in the not-too-far future. Are we looking at what we can streamline of our teachers' ongoing responsibilities? And I'm not looking at the legal mandates because we don't have any discretion there. But anything that is from, you know, either a local mandate, and I'll call that from central office, or from a school mandate? You know, what are we doing to ensure that we are not putting any, I would say undue burden, but it's already undue, but any, any additional burden on already overburdened teachers? Because some of these things, as Ms. Randall mentioned, the lunch duty, we've got funds for, you know, part-time people, I assume. I mean, we, Mr. Fulmer told us we're going to have, you know, a significant amount, if it continues as it is, of lapsed funds. So, you know, is it possible to hire some part-time people in the middle of the day? You know, to come in, you know, half a day, that can just relieve teachers, you know, during these times? Or give them a break. If we don't do something, we are going to have a very dire situation at the end of the school year. And I'm not, I'm not talking about, you know, a couple four-day weekends. I'm talking about you making a change in the everyday, you know, life of a teacher and what has to be done. So, and I know that HR is looking at, you know, the substitutes and making a lot of progress, and that's encouraging. So let's apply that same approach to analyzing and streamlining all these other responsibilities that have, you know, crept up to make a mountain that the teachers really have to climb every day.
Dr. Chase?
Yeah, and I would just, at some point, also like to hear, and not, not right now either. You know, it was interesting to me to hear, you know, prior to the pandemic, I'm very much aware of teachers struggling with having to, you know, craft their curriculum for a wide range of ability levels. And hearing tonight about that that's become even more challenging. How do we, you know, do we need to think about where students are placed so that they're placed with, at the right grade level? So that the teacher teaching that student is actually, that is the curriculum that they're accustomed to teaching? So, you know, if you're a third-grade teacher, but you have a student who maybe because of the pandemic is operating at the first-grade level, maybe that student should be, maybe we need to be looking at that. So it's just a question. I mean, I know that you guys are, and some of that is what all this testing is about, which again is an additional load for our teachers. So just trying to kind of, curious about that. Thank you.
If you'll indulge me, I'm going to follow up on a point Dr. Chase just made about, about the testing and assessments. Would it be possible to have a assessment-free period of two weeks or so? You know, that.
All of November, we're not even here.
Right. And I think that's, that's been, you know, brought to our attention. But if we could do that, that would be something that would be a relief. I mean, and I'm looking at the, the local requirements here. Because as I said, we have no control over the federal or the state mandates, but we have complete control over the local requirements. So if there's something that we can do that would help alleviate this pressure on the, on the teachers, I think there would be, you know, there would be a lot of gratitude for that. And that would go a long way, in my view, to helping the wellness journey.
All right. I thank you all for having some discussion on this because I think this is not the first time this topic will be raised. And I think going forward, we need to all be working together to come up with ideas to eliminate and alleviate and to support our staff. I will speak to the next item. I had discussion regarding the CIP and new enrollment projections because I was, this was to prepare us for our upcoming December 7th joint work session, which was canceled by the Board of Supervisors right after we put this item on the agenda. I did not choose to remove it because I do think that we have an urgent problem from the school board perspective of where we're going to put students. I really hope that the next boards will also have the same urgency that this board has. Although it has not been signed, of course, into final legislation, there is in the infrastructure bill and other things about universal pre-K for three- and four-year-olds. If anybody thinks we are crowded now, I am not making a comment on that, but we need to be getting ahead of this curve. And we need to have meaningful discussions between our funding body and our schools. So unfortunately, we will not be needing to have that discussion on December 7th as a joint board. But I would encourage all of us and those who are looking at all these numbers that we start having these discussions. Otherwise, it will become a crisis and everybody will say, oh, my goodness, we didn't know. We know it's coming and we want to have these discussions. So to my board members who will remain and to the new board members who come, I hope you have these joint meetings quickly. Mr. Anderson, I did have one, the TRC meeting sched, how is that working? If you could come up, I actually meant to say something about that in here and I forgot. I don't, I don't know if that has gotten off track as well or not.
Madam Chair, before he makes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Jones.
Just so you'll know, we are, staff is having those conversations with county staff. On, I met with Mr. Presley yesterday. So we're, and I know Mr. Fulmer's also having those conversations with the school finance folks on the other side.
Yes, and the TRC has been meeting and I think it's been very productive and supportive of the schools.
I'm sure we couldn't wait to send those new projections over there once we had them and released. When did the TRC recommendations, I mean, I know some of them were based on some of these dates, but they.
Yeah, I would have to let the county staff report that information, but I just know we have been meeting regularly and they've been really, really good productive discussions.
Once those come, I'm sure they will come even when they're in the draft form, just so that the board is aware of where that's moving. I would appreciate it. And I think the board members would appreciate it. So we do not have to be preparing for the December 7th meeting, but I just want. Mr. Anderson? Go ahead.
Mr. Anderson, it's not with the, these full schools, but my, my question has to do with the turf fields, which to many may seem a luxury, but to some are a necessity. I have a, I received an email from Ms. Margaret Lowery, and I think those of you who have been around a while will recognize her name. She was the Assistant Principal for Athletics at North Stafford and for many, many years ran a very successful athletic program. And she lives in my district, so she wrote to me. And she, she made a plea for the turf field at North. And, you know, she, she pointed out that we had put it in the CIP for a certain year, but then when it went to the county, it got delayed for, you know, a significant additional number of years. And she said when she was here, and this was, she's retired, you know, several years ago, they put together a financial analysis on how it really would benefit the school system, you know, financially, to have the turf field versus the maintenance on the regular fields. And it's not just North, it's also Colonial Forge that doesn't have that field. And of course, our students are also at a disadvantage for a number of reasons, including not being able to practice, you know, because of the conditions of the fields with weather and everything. So I would like to put in a request that, that we look at this and perhaps it's something that even the Fab could look at. If there's any way to address, you know, getting these turf fields for North and for Colonial Forge. Certainly not waiting, you know, another decade, you know, for that, for that to happen. But if we can, if we can show that there is a financial benefit and savings that will be, you know, made by having them, then that may, may help us, you know, in moving them up.
Yeah, I know that there are quite a few people very interested in having these turf fields at Colonial Forge and North Stafford High School. And the issue is really more of a parity issue than it is. It can save maintenance costs, but it also costs money upfront. So the logistics and even the safety issues with these turf fields are an issue. And I agree, it's a big priority. This school board approved the design for both of these fields. So I think we're going to be in a good position if there are funds identified in the future.
And they are part of the three, I mean, that was approved by this board, I know.
Yes.
How many years from now? I mean, and how many years has it been since we got them at?
They're a few years out and I think they, and I don't know that the funding for those two projects are assured either. So I think that. So I think that is a huge issue, just on the limitations of the funding and making sure that these badly needed projects are actually accomplished.
But we did authorize the funding for the design part of that process. Once that starts, it makes it much easier for us to approve things when the funds become available.
Yes.
I don't, I don't recall that we've ever really had a study or a review of the savings that can be had if we had these in place versus the, the current field. So that's something that I would request, again, not immediate, but that, that we try to get it done, you know, sometime before the end of this fiscal year. If we know what we'll save, then we can make a decision about, you know, the return on that investment of, of the, you know, of, of having it done. Because it is, it's, if I were an athlete, I would feel disadvantaged by not having that turf field, not because it's a luxury, but just because there's just so many additional benefits that go along to being able to, to, to use it. And just because of the school you're assigned to, you know, it's, it's luck of the draw.
Yes, and we have looked at that and we can provide that information.
All right. Any other comments? If not, upcoming meetings, we will have our special called meeting tomorrow night at 7:30, November 10th, on Wednesday, tomorrow evening in school board chambers. And then our next regular meeting of the board is December 14th at, beginning at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening. We are adjourned.